Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Today is Monday, June 10, 2024. Commissioners' Court is meeting in regular open session. This morning, we're joined by ASL interpreters Stephanie Michelle, Montserrat Villasana, and Dario Garcia. Commissioner Olgin, would you like to introduce this morning's pledge student?
Yes, thank you, Caesar. Good morning, everyone. So I would actually like to introduce Kayla Euyoki, who is a new intern in my office for the summer. She's a student at UTEP, and she will be leading us in the pledge today.
Welcome. Please rise for the pledge.
Good morning. Let's start. So I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll receive an invocation from Pastor Anthony Bedoya from Cavalry Chapel, Sun City.
Good morning. Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, Judge and Commissioners, and good morning, El Paso. I pray all of you are doing and feeling wonderful this beautiful Monday morning. Let's pray. Lord, I call upon your Holy Spirit and ask that you fill this room and this entire building with your presence. Protect all those that work here, and I pray your peace, grace, and mercy would abound in this building and in all our hearts. Special prayer for Judge Samaniego, Commissioner Olgin, Commissioner Leon, Commissioner Coronado, and Commissioner Stout. Bless them with wisdom and bless those that are around them with wisdom as well. Protect them from those that may try to cause division and confusion. Give them great clarity that comes from you to make the tough decisions they need to make. Give them the courage and boldness to make decisions that will bring you great honor and glory, even if it goes against the grain. Lord, once again, I ask that you bless and protect our courthouse security, all employees, elected officials, all judges. There is a lot of evil out there in this world, and I ask that you protect us all, all of us, Lord, from those trying to cause hurt, destroy, or division. Give us great discernment to see those people and to pray for them and love on them as you do. No matter what is going on in this world, you are and will always be Lord of Lord and King of King. For those of us who have put our faith in you, we have the victory in you. Thank you, God and Jesus, for the ultimate sacrifice you made for all of us on the cross and defeating death. You paid the ultimate price, and that is true love. The Lord bless you and keep you. The Lord make his face shine upon you and be gracious to you. The Lord lift up his continence upon you and give you peace. Lord, thank you. And once again, Lord, give Wally a big old hug for us and let him know he's in our hearts and he's greatly missed. In his name, we pray. Amen. God bless all of you.
God bless. Thank you for sending us off on a Monday. This is very, very special. And remembering Wally, that's very, very kind of you because we all do that as well. Thank you for that. I appreciate that.
Have a great, great week. God bless you all.
God bless you.
Judge, do you have some opening remarks for us this morning?
Just want to welcome all of you to Commissioners' Court, always on behalf of the Commissioners and myself. We always welcome being here. We have some great resolutions, great things happening. Very thankful to the community. We had a very successful Texas Democratic Convention. Hadn't had one in almost two decades and was done very well. Very excited about meeting so many individuals. But one of the things for sure, you know, I keep saying to nurses to love us, and I think they left loving us because our community really always finds a way to be kind, and they sense it. And so I'm very grateful because it's very important to Commissioners' Court that we keep wanting to create a great environment for people to come. I hope that we had, I was able to send off 100, you know, to the mission trails. Got an opportunity to speak to them on the bus before they left, and they come back. Commissioner Olgin, they're very extremely happy. They just couldn't stop telling us enough about our missions and the mission trail. So I'm going to challenge our community that have never been or have been there a long time ago to make sure that you do go because it feels a lot better to know that our community loves our missions as much as the individuals that come. So once again, thank you very much for doing that and wishing all of you just a great Monday and just an amazing week. Thank you.
Item number four is the consent agenda, composed of items 4A through 4Q. We have a request from the county auditor regarding item number 4C. We'd like to have this item deleted. This was previously postponed on June 3, 2024. The item is to approve and authorize the county judge to sign the required agreements with Frost Bank from May 31, 2024 through May 31, 2027, to allow collateral related to the purchase of securities, contract number 2024-0435. We also have a correction to read in for item 4G from the Budget and Finance Department. Item 4G should read, "Approve and authorize the district attorney to transfer funds from within the forfeiture account in the amount of $53,500 from Special Revenue DA Special Operations Equipment to Special Revenue DA Spec Professional Services General to cover the cost of legal fees brought on from the SB4 lawsuit against the district attorney." We also have a correction to read in for item O for the purchasing department. Item 4O should read, pursuant to Texas Local Government Code, Section 262.024A4, "Approve and authorize the use of a professional service exemption to purchasing procedures to the following service providers participating in the Border Prosecution Unit for the El Paso County District Attorney's Office from Robert Keppel, Senator Pete Flores, Texas Senate District 24 Shannon Edmonds, Brandon Wood, Jason Clark, Eduardo R. Castillo, David Newell, and Burt Richardson, Dallas Children's Advocacy Center, Tom Crampitz, Kathleen Braddock, Michael Bryant, Therese Buses, Mark Warren, Allison Buses, William Turner, Drew Durham, Ted Wilson, Lance Long, Craig Goodheart, Melissa Hightower, Mark Edwards, Samantha DiMayo, Justin Wood, Jan Halverson, Latoya Robinson, Texas District and County Attorneys Association, and El Paso Sheriff's Office. Funds are available in special grant, R1 Border Prosecution Unit 24 operating expense. Are there any other items that members of the court or the public would like to pull for discussion?
Commissioner Leon?
Is item G, 4G?
Item G for Commissioner Leon?
Just to make a comment on that item. We will be going to executive, so right after our resolution. So I know the media has some interest in that item, and we'll take that real quick.
Before we go into executive, I'd like to
Absolutely.
to make a few comments, if Mr. Hicks can make it up here.
Okay, so we'll have resolution, comments, and then we'll go into executive.
Thank you.
Okay? Is that good, Erica? Yeah? Thank you.
Yes, I think we'll just need a motion later, but we could work on that, yes, sir.
Any other items?
If there are no items, so move to approve.
I'm locked out of my computer. If y'all can mark me down for an "I."
Mine's not coming out.
It's not coming up.
Our second. We have our motion from Judge Samaniego, a second from Commissioner Coronado. The voting is open.
My screen says voting not available.
Do you want to take the vote until we?
Commissioner Olgin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Coronado?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 5A, Resolutions. Approve and adopt a resolution declaring June 12, 2024 as Women Veterans Day in El Paso County, Texas.
Commissioner Stout?
Good morning. Good morning. Thank you all very much. Happy to read this resolution into the record. But before I do so, I want to read into the record a letter to the editor that was written by Melissa Harkrow and published in the El Paso Times this weekend. And it said, "June 12, 1948, is when Congress passed the Women's Armed Service Integration Act, giving women permanent military status. However, women could not command men, be promoted above Colonel, and each branch could not have more than 2% of women," among other restrictions. "Over time, the armed services fought against removing restrictions. The VA fundamentally did not treat women as veterans and argued against reforming its medical system. The US Census did not ask women their veteran status until 1980. The lack of representation and being made to feel as though their service does not matter are some reasons why women veterans feel isolated. This is a barrier to learning about and using benefits. So until our service is equal to that of men, we will continue to celebrate Women's Veterans Day." And I really appreciate that advocacy and those words, and I'm very proud that here in this county, we are an inclusive, we have an inclusive family that in many ways, including being committed to gender equity. And that's why, for example, we have a women's commission as well. And one more thing that I wanted to do before I read the resolution was to thank Alexis McCray for the work that she did on my behalf on the Veterans Advisory Board. I don't see her here with us today, but I really want to publicly say that I appreciate the diligence with which she addressed her role as my appointee to that Veterans Advisory Committee, and she was also the most recent chair. So with that, I'll go ahead and read the resolution, and then we'll hear from all the ladies that are standing up here. It says, "Whereas women have formerly been a part of the United States Armed Forces since the establishment of the Army Nurses Corps in 1901, but have been formally served since the inception of the United States military. And whereas women have served honorably and with valor, including disguised as male soldiers during the American Revolution and the Civil War, as nurses during World War I and World War II, and as combat helicopter pilots in Afghanistan. And whereas in 1943, Congress introduced and passed legislation to establish the Women's Army Corps, WAC, which provided full military status to women. And whereas 75 years ago, on June 12, 1948, President Harry S. Truman signed the Women's Armed Services Integration Act, allowing women to serve as regular members of the military. And in 2017, the Texas Legislature designated June 12 as Women's Veterans Day. And whereas women have proudly served to secure and preserve liberty with integrity, dedication, and respect, women veterans experience unique challenges in receiving the healthcare support and recognition they deserve. And whereas women are currently and always will be an important part of the veteran community, El Paso County is proud of and appreciates the services and sacrifices of women in uniform. And whereas this year, there is a series of events to celebrate Women Veterans Day that started with a Take a Walk in Her Boots 5K fun run on June 9, and is followed by a wreath-laying ceremony at the Old Glory Memorial on June 12, a Women Veterans Lunch hosted by Senator Cesar Blanco on June 14, and an EP TX WV Women Veterans Day event on June 15. And whereas, an example of women veteran leadership in the community was shown by Alexis McCray during her tenure as the VAB Chairwoman and her efforts spearheading the first Women Veterans Lunch in 2022. And now therefore be it resolved by the El Paso County Judge and Commissioners' Court that El Paso County designates June 12 as Women Veterans Recognition Day to recognize the service and sacrifices of women veterans of El Paso County who have served both those still living and those who died in the service of this country. Signed this 10th day of June 2024, the Honorable County Commissioners' Court."
We have a motion from Commissioner Stout and a second from Commissioner Olgin. The voting is open. Judge, we need your vote.
Okay, now, Tony.
About?
I'm still locked out of my computer, so I vote "I."
Thank you. The motion carries.
Thank you.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Antoinette Hunt, you're Veteran County Service Officer. I'm also a Sergeant First Class, retired, United States Army. I can't thank you enough for this resolution. Alexis normally spearheads this, but unfortunately, she has family business that she had to attend to. So I told her that we didn't mind taking the reins. But I would be amiss if I didn't recognize everything that she's done for us and how she's pioneered this program and made it so that, you know, we're all available in there. And I can tell you the run we did yesterday. Although it was windy, we had a great turnout and a lot of camaraderie. So we're ready for a week of fun-filled events. These women are mothers and sisters and daughters and wives, and I can't tell you how much work it is to shoot at a live-fire range all day and then go home and realize you have to make cupcakes for a bake sale for school. So they really are the masters of time management and skills. So I'm really excited to have them all here. I'd like them all to come introduce themselves if they could. Go ahead, Jessica.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Jessica Ramirez, born El Paso, Texas. Joined the military in 2000 and served the last Joined the military in 2000 and served the last 23 years of my life. And I have my beautiful children, Christian and John Michael. Like she said, there's a lot of sacrifice put into this, and as well, I'll be missed if I don't miss my spouse in the back standing in the blue. He came a little late, so he's back there. But thank you for this recognition. It's huge for us, and I'm proud to be part of the El Paso, Texas Women's Veteran Group. Thank you.
Thank you, we're very proud of you.
And our Veteran of the Year?
Good morning. My name is Donna, and once a soldier, always a soldier, proud U.S. Army veteran. And all I got to say is give a shout out to all veteran women. For each and every single one of you who know veteran women, we just ask them to come forward and say who they are, be a part. We have some great elections coming this year, like the new Veteran of the Year. We want to give a shout out if you're active in our community, and if you're not currently, I invite anyone that you know, anyone in this community listening, to come get involved because we need each other. And all I can say is social connections really make a successful community. Thank you for letting me be your Veteran of the Year this year.
Donna, I just want to say we're so proud of you as the Veteran of the Year, lots of things that you've been doing. Thank you for keeping, you know, you're still in the mental health field and you have to do this, and working with the Treatment Court is very special to us, so thank you for everything that you do, Donna.
Proud to serve this community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Melissa Harkrow, 12-year U.S. Army veteran. Sounds like it's going out. I'm also the Women Veterans Coordinator for West Texas with the Texas Veterans Commission. So this is part of what I do, is a lot of advocacy, awareness, and education is one reason why I wrote that letter, because recently I have been getting a lot of, why do we have Women Veterans Day? And many people consider it very divisive, and I want to say that it's also not meant to be a separate Veterans Day. It's meant to commemorate the day that we became permanent members of the military despite serving in unofficial and official capacities since the Revolutionary War. In addition to that, I do ask everyone to keep us in mind when you think of representations of service members and veterans. Typically, we see the males represented quite well. We don't see women represented as well. And as I said, that's a reason for feeling isolated, feeling like you're not a veteran. And there was another point I had to say with that. Oh, yes. So just to point out there as well, because many people don't know, we have one woman who has ever won the Medal of, not won, earned the Medal of Honor, and we have 25 women service members who are missing in action. They are classified as missing in action since World War II. So when we think of the missing man table, it's not a missing man, missing person, missing comrade, et cetera. Those women have not been found. Thank you.
Thank you. That's great clarification, and thank you for those comments. Good morning.
Dr. Andrea Tawney, and I'm a proud United States Air Force veteran, joined right after high school, a very long time ago. Served four years active duty, four years reserve, and went in right before 9/11, so a very eye-opening experience for an 18-year-old, but wouldn't change it for the world. Proud to serve my country and continue to serve in different capacities in my community and represent for female veterans. And did junior ROTC as well for three years in high school. So first in my family to graduate from college thanks to the GI Bill and the service to my country, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your service. Thank you.
Good morning, Tasha Martinez.
Good morning.
Not from El Paso, but making a little stamp for our family. I joined the Army later in life, but it's brought me to my family, friends from abroad, and it's been a great experience. I got introduced to them, and it's just great. I love that the community is so involved, and we're female-friendly, and I hope to do big things with them. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Good morning. I'm Ramona Shaw Graham Moore. I'm still serving, still serving. I have 23 years of service with my active-duty time and my reserve time, and I'm still serving this day at my unit, 410 Civil Affairs. Thank y'all so much for this honor. I've served in this community and still serving, and just thank you for the opportunity to be here, to recognize our women veterans and recognize the women veterans not only in the country but in El Paso. This is very special day. Thank you so much.
Thank you, very well deserved. Thank you.
And I also have four comebacks, two to Iraq, two to Afghanistan, 36 months of duty that I served overseas. Thank you.
We're so proud of you. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm going to take this really short. My name is Bianca Windowski. I served 12 years in the Army. I recently got out two years ago, and I'm so proud and glad to be around other female veterans that have been supporting me, and I'm also glad that Women's Veterans Day is also my birthday. Thank you.
Oh, nice.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners.
Good morning.
My name is Sissy Bird, and I am not a veteran, but I just want people to understand we need to support the women veterans because they have endured so much and have been forgotten with their presence right here. So I think it's a great thing that y'all are doing this today, and please, if y'all know anybody, any woman that's a veteran, get them to and be involved. Let them go apply for their VA benefits and everything else. Thank you.
Thank you. Not a veteran, but one of the strongest advocates for veterans. I appreciate that.
She is. She's everywhere, like everywhere I see her, everywhere.
Thank you.
Before we wrap it up, I just wanted to say my office did a lot of work, and I don't know if you noticed the transformation in the Commissioners Court lobby, but there is a Women Veterans Wall that I'm very proud of. Over 100 photos of women, and they're not women sitting at desks, they're women behind rifles, and they're women in turrets and women with helmets, women deployed doing interpretation with the locals in Iraq and Afghanistan. So they're doing big things, and I just want to make sure that we all notice that. But I think it's really amazing, and I'm going to take all the ladies when we're done to go take a look at it.
Well, we thank you. You know, we keep saying that there's pillars for the Veterans Capitol of the USA, but I don't think there's one as strong as the women. We're very fortunate, at the beginning, when we started proclaiming and wanting to be the Veterans Capitol, it just didn't happen overnight, it happened in 2019. And I was very embarrassed because I was at Scotty Park, and there was hundreds of women veterans, and I just realized that I was like everybody else, and I'll admit that I hadn't in my mind incorporated the importance that they have. And so if you could see the design, we made it up a little bit with a design having the woman in the middle, and so that's very special. And I can ask, if I could ask you also that this idea of people are not understanding how important to have such a moniker as Veterans Capitol of the United States of America, because, you know, yes, or Friday, I was able to do the welcoming, and I started off by saying, you know, you're here at the Veterans Capitol of the United States of America, and you've got so many people out there that now convey that. I've been able to introduce, you know, myself with the President of the United States as Welcome to the Veterans Capitol of the United States of America. Every official I ever meet, we talk about that, and I think it's very special because once it gives us a tremendous amount of accountability. We just can't say that and then not do it because now we're under the microscope. And so we're very, very proud of that, and so as women, I can't tell you how important that is. And everybody needs to know, there is not one single woman that ever got drafted because they all volunteered. Imagine that. You can't say that about men, right? Some didn't volunteer, they got drafted. But as far as women, never has there been a draft for women, so every woman that joined, joined on their own as a volunteer. When I heard that a long time ago, I thought, wow, that's very powerful, because, you know, you wanted to be there. You didn't, you know, get drafted into it. So I really appreciate everything that you do, and I hope the community understands that we're very proud. I mean, some of the women here today, oh my goodness, I mean, this is very important to, and still serving, you know, are military, and they're doing so at this very moment. And so anyway, thank you very much, Commissioner Stout, thank you for the resolution. Everybody else, we really want to thank you for what you do, looking forward to the celebrations that are coming up. Tony, unbelievable work that you do and the connection that you have with everybody and your team as well, so thank you very much. Commissioner Stout?
Well, very well said, Judge. Thank you so much. Again, thank you to each and every one of you for, of course, your service in the military, but your continued service in this community and just showing us how we should be. And let's take a picture. I've got the resolution here for you. Thank you so much.
Let me just say that. Oh, I'm sorry. I just, no, I just want to say that I am absolutely honored to be working amongst these brilliant, fearless women who continue to work with fellow veterans. And I know that you will not be forgotten, you will not be left behind, and thank you for your service that you did then. Thank you for the service you're doing now, and I'm just proud to be here amongst you all. Thank you, Judge Samaniego and Commissioners, for everything that you do for the veterans community. Thank you. Ivan Whitaker from the Veterans Remick Court.
I'm sorry. Sorry. He blocked me, I wasn't allowed to go anywhere. Tony? Tony?
Judge, before the veterans leave, I'd like to remind them that we're always looking for volunteers for Veterans Advisory Board and encourage them to get with Tony if they're ever interested in serving on the Veterans Advisory Board.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Jessica.
Item number 5B, approve and adopt a resolution recognizing June 12, 2024, as Little Jo Hernandez and Fred Sandovalde in El Paso County, Texas.
Commissioner Olgin?
Thank you, Judge. Well, it is my honor to read this resolution for, in honor of a person who has been such an inspiration not only to communities like ours here in El Paso, but Latino-Latina communities throughout the country. So as I read this, Corinne Chacon, if you could please make your way up to the microphones for some remarks. Whereas, the behavioral health of the residents of El Paso County, Texas is of the utmost importance for family dignity, social cohesion, economic prosperity, and overall community well-being. And whereas, stigma about seeking treatment for behavioral health continues to create a barrier for individuals and families to pursue treatment. And whereas, El Paso County has made behavioral health a top priority as the community continues to recover from the traumatic shock of the August 3, 2019 massacre and the devastating sequela of COVID-19 pandemic, which began in 2020. And whereas, events that elevate the discussion of behavioral health within and for the community are invaluable for encouraging individuals to end their isolation and seek assistance for themselves and their loved ones. And whereas, the Mexican-American Cultural Institute and the Field of Stars, Campo de Estrellas, a digital museum of flags that honor community-oriented leadership, seek to share inspiration and education as a means of strengthening public resolve and resilience. And whereas, five-time Grammy winner and 2023 National Heritage Fellow José María de León Hernández, known as Little Jo, and Fred Sandoval, Executive Director of the National Latino Behavioral Health Association, will be hosted by the Mexican-American Cultural Institute and the Field of Stars in a discussion, Charlando con mi gente, about Little Jo's life, career, and emotional resilience at El Paso Community College on June 12, 2024. And whereas, both Little Jo and Fred Sandoval personify love for humanity expressed through their tireless service to others and devotion to community. And whereas, the National Latino Behavioral Health Association is among the nation's foremost advocates for Latino behavioral health. And whereas, the Little Jo Hernández flag, sponsored by former El Paso County Judge Alicia R. Chacon, will be unveiled and added to the Field of Stars collection of inspiring stories of service to others. Now therefore, may it be resolved, the County of El Paso, through this official resolution, expresses its gratitude to Little Jo Hernández and Fred Sandoval for visiting our city and sharing this vital healthcare discussion with an audience of farmworkers, community health workers, students, public educators, and generations of fans who have been witness to Little Jo's astonishing 62-year-long trajectory as an artist, as a voice for fairness, and as a treasured friend of the community. We hereby proclaim June 12, 2024, as Little Jo Hernández and Fred Sandovalde. In official recognition thereof, the Commissioners of the Court hereby affix their signatures this 10th date of June 2024 in El Paso County, Texas.
We have a motion from Commissioner Olgin and a second from Judge Samaniego. The voting is open. Stout? The motion carries.
Corinne, welcome. Welcome. Thank you for being here.
Of course, thank you, and good morning to everyone. It is always an honor to be here. And when I asked the Commissioner for recognition that we are having this important discussion here in El Paso, she elevated it, as she does, to declaring the day on, to express our gratitude that they're having this discussion here. El Paso continues to be a leader in emotional resilience and community cohesion, and we do that by being together, you know, and doing things together and being inclusive. You know, and the Field of Stars, which tells the story of over 55 heroic champions, men and women, of justice, of fairness, of basic principles that make the country so great, is very proud to be the partner through which the Mexican-American Cultural Institute expresses its program to the community until it has its building. So the flags go wherever the community asks. We've been in different schools. Each flag has a QR code, so this innovative technology makes it possible for students to scan that code and instantly read the biography of that person. So these are the biographies of Al Pasuans that are not featured anywhere, and particularly as a body of knowledge. So the support of the county in having their place flags, the support of the county in their support of heritage tourism and their valuing of history, you know, even in the naming of this room, in the naming of the courthouse, continues to demonstrate that these roots that we have bring us together and really make the community extraordinary. It's an extraordinary place, and the visitors to the convention learn that because you can feel it. Little Jo Hernández and Fred Sandoval are going to have an amazing discussion. discussion. We will be recording it and sharing it later with the community. So Wednesday's going to be an extraordinary day, and the Commissioner will be there to present it. And I know it's going to make their day because they're both very humble individuals, like most of the people in the Field of Stars. Very humble, very grounded, and very appreciative that their community is appreciative and acknowledges what they've done and how important it's been. So I give you my thanks and the thanks of my family, the Field of Stars and the Mexican-American Cultural Institute. We still have a few seats left. I was going to chase the veterans and see if anybody wanted to go. So I thank you so much. And the stars are shining bright. Thank you so much.
Corrine, we thank you. I mean, you've been such an advocate for mental health. And, you know, I keep saying that we're not understanding the complexity of it and how it's evolving out of the pandemic and how subtle it is. And, well, not anymore. I mean, I used to say it was subtle, but I think it's now in front of us. And I thank you for addressing it head-on like you do. It's such an honor to be here at your mother's namesake for the Commissioners' Court. But just your advocacy, and I think we need to continue to understand that people are still dealing a lot of repressed situations.
Very much so. Yes.
And so I thank you for that. And I thank Commissioner Olgin for the resolution. And I know that Little Joe has been part of our culture and the way we see things. And so I think it's going to be just a tremendous coming together of many facets of addressing our mental health challenges. So once again, thank you for your advocacy.
Sure. Sure. Let me just add this literacy moment. Inspiration actually shifts brain chemistry. So when you see the Field of Stars, when you see people or exposed to stories of people who have been champions of fairness, either through being heroic, like the veterans, through their dedication and perseverance, or brilliant, or creative, or generous, we actually shift. And so it's a healing experience to be inspired. So, and that's not me. That is science, neuroscience. So in supporting this project, every time the flags are displayed, we are helping continually to be healing and re-weaving the connections between us that the trauma created dissociation. So it's that general re-weaving, and it's because we learn each other's stories. It's as simple as that. Thank you.
And these are the conversations that we need. You just shifted my neurons as well.
Excellent. Excellent.
Commissioner Olgin, thank you.
No, thank you, Corrine, not only for all of the work that you've done to organize this very, very important event, but also for all of your incredible work with the Field of Stars. I see how you are really changing the lives of some of these students, how they really are being impacted. And it's just a beautiful, beautiful thing to be able to witness. So thank you for your work doing that as well. And just for all of your work that you've always done throughout the years, being an incredible advocate for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Go ahead, Caesar.
Item number six is public comment. We have two speakers this morning. First, we have Ms. Elizabeth Crawford. She on cue?
Good morning, Elizabeth.
Just for everybody's notification, public comment is limited to five minutes. Everybody is being timed. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, Elizabeth.
Good morning. This month, many people are celebrating Juneteenth as the end of the institution of slavery in the United States. And we thank God for those who conscientiously stood against the brutality of slave trafficking in our nation. We're told in God's Word, John 8:36, "If the Son therefore shall make you free, you shall be free indeed," referring to the Lord Jesus. Four years ago, we as a nation watched a BLM riot in our cities. Black Lives Matter, the name sounds good, but did the organization live up to its name? Later, allegations surfaced that the organization's leaders were grossly mismanaging funds. The clenched-up racist is often associated with BLM and in many urban contexts with the green, red, black flag associated with those who would identify as Palestinians. Why that commonality? The so-called Nation of Islam, Louis Farrakhan, is known for his view of anti-Semitism, of hate speech against the Jews. By contrast, I would like to speak briefly about a man I was privileged to serve with for about a year and a half in New Jersey, Ron Schumate. Ron Schumate believes that Black Lives Matter. Ron Schumate believes that all lives matter. Ron knew that the vast majority of Black lives are taken not on the streets of our nation, but at the abortion centers of our nation. He was probably my favorite person to serve with outside the Englewood, New Jersey abortion center. When Ron Schumate was with me, people couldn't throw at me the connoting remark, "You don't live in my world." Ron Schumate was from the inner city. I loved to give out his numbers so young people could talk with him. Ron is black, and he's an older gentleman, and that opened doors to conversations with people that I was unable to have. Instead of jumping onto the common methods of the social justice bandwagon, methods of protesting, Ron's desire was to serve the Lord Jesus Christ and to be a beacon of light in the inner city where he lived, with his kids, with his kids' friends. One day, Ron shared his testimony with me as a young man who'd be out all night doing drugs. One morning, upon arriving home, his mother greeted him, told him she was praying, and asked if he was ready to turn to Jesus. Ron said on that morning, he shook his head, "No." But out of his mouth came the cry, "Yes, yes." He told me that day he was born again. He went through the grueling process of detoxing from drugs. He told me when he went back to work after detoxing, he told his boss he was now a Christian. His boss laughed and laughed. That was 40 years ago. Ron said to me some 40 years later, "The Lord Jesus Christ has set me free." And he has the privilege of sharing that good news with others in his family, in his neighborhood, at the abortion center. Juneteenth, as we think of freedom from slavery, Ron Schumate's testimony is a reminder of the beautiful words of Christ in Luke Chapter 4. The Lord said, "The Spirit of the Lord is upon me, because he has anointed me to preach the gospel to the poor. He has sent me to heal the brokenhearted, to preach deliverance to the captives and recovering a sight for the blind, to set at liberty them that are bruised, to preach the acceptable, the favorable, year of the Lord," the words of the Lord Jesus Christ. That is true freedom. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Have a wonderful day, Elizabeth.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Ron Cumu.
Pardon me, Betty.
Ron Cumu? Anybody in the audience?
Do you plan to be online?
He was actually going to be in person. Just one moment. Let me see if I have another message from him. Yeah, he was going to appear in person.
He's not on Teams. He is not on Teams either.
Will we come back to public comment if he arrives?
Okay. Had two other speakers sign up. Just wanted to confirm if they are here. David Buckmuller? David Buckmuller? No. And Yubia Álvarez? That completes public comments.
Thank you, Caesar.
Going back to the item pulled from the consent agenda, item 4G, with a correction from the Budget and Finance Department, approve and authorize the district attorney to transfer funds from the, from within the forfeiture account in the amount of $53,500 from special revenue DA spec ops equipment to special revenue DA spec professional services general to cover the cost of legal fees brought on from the SB4 lawsuit against the district attorney's office.
As I mentioned, we will be hearing comments from Commissioner Leon and then, as well as our DA, and then we'll be going into executive session to conclude this.
Judge Commissioners, Errol Sosnigadlin, Assistant County Attorney. Certainly after those comments, Assistant County Attorney Kevin McCary is also ready to give a summary of his analysis in open session. But we're also happy to go into executive session if that's your preference.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead, Commissioner Leon.
Thank you, Judge Commissioners. Mr. Hicks, thank you so much for coming in this morning. I know that you and Renee are very busy. And please accept these comments as not disrespectful, but something that I have observed and feel very strongly about. And if you don't mind, I will say a few words and I'll relinquish the floor to you for whatever you may want to say. And I want to start off with your forfeiture funds or confiscated funds account. Although they come in a different direction than our tax funding comes and others, they still, once they hit this building, once they hit the county departments, they become taxpayer funds. They belong to our taxpayers, and they trust in us to use them wisely and ethically. And on January 22, and again on January 29, Commissioners' Court considered a request from Mr. Hicks to authorize $100,000 in funding to be used to hire outside counsel to represent him in matters related to his before lawsuit. On January 22, the court took no action. January 29, the court voted unanimously against authorizing the funding. Mr. Hicks indicated he needed the funds because he expected to present a different defense than the approach by the Texas Attorney General, Ken Paxton, and that the counsel offered by AG Paxton would not meet his expectations and that Mr. Hicks would use his prosecutorial discretion. This is disingenuous, given the fact that DA Hicks moved forward with prosecuting over 200 individuals involved in what he called a riot in crossing the border. The funds that he wants to transfer come from the asset forfeiture fund designated for the purchase of office equipment. This is likely intentional to deflate or deflect attention away from the use of taxpayer money. However, the asset forfeiture funds are collected on behalf of the citizens of El Paso. I think this is more a, the reason I brought it forward is this is a transparency issue, in my opinion. You went around the wishes of the court where you could have gotten your defense paid for by the state, and you refused. You again decided to put this expense on the backs of taxpayer funding here in El Paso. You indicated that you need outside counsel because you expect requests for depositions and discovery. I don't know if you've had any of those to this date. So do you, Mr. Hicks, still plan to use the discretion as you indicated in your first request in January? So the reason that this has been brought back up is the funding, the $53,000 that you are transferring from the equipment account, seems to me that, in my opinion, could have been much better used for training for your staff. It could have been used for equipment. I'm not so sure that when you submit your budget for 2025, it will have, I'm sure, equipment. So in my opinion, you're supplanting this, and the county of El Paso, the citizens of El Paso, are paying for your defense anyway, when they could have gotten it for free. So I turn the floor over to you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Would the county attorney like to address the transfer of funds and then we'll... Go ahead.
Thank you.
Kevin McCary, Assistant County Attorney. As I understand it, Commissioner Leon, in January, you were looking at the use of general funds. This is, as a matter of law, a different funding source under the statute. And by the way, I have no personal opinion. I'm just filling you in on what the statute is. So what the statute allows the district attorney to do under Chapter 59, if the source of the funding was asset forfeiture, is to use it for his legal defense. So as long as those monies are coming from the asset forfeiture source, the statute gives him great discretion in using it for that purpose.
No, I understand that. I understand that. But the way I see it is that once it hits the coffers, whether it's an individual department or the county general fund, they become taxpayer money. And yes, he does have all the rights to use it as he sees fit. But nevertheless, it's taxpayer money that could have been avoided by accepting the defense that the state has offered.
Certainly, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. DA, you're welcome to comment.
Okay. Thank you, Judge and Commissioners. Once again, I find myself in the position of having to address the issue regarding how I should be defending myself to the body which has determined that they should sue me. I forgive my tone, Commissioners, but with respect, you are the body who determined that you should sue me in my official capacity. And in doing that, you have placed me in the situation where I must defend myself. I was, went to the Texas Attorney General's office and was offered the services of a junior assistant attorney general, someone who I did not have confidence would represent me in the way that I felt was appropriate. If Commissioner Leon would like to review the pleadings that have been filed by my very able-bodied, local counsel, you will just notice a distinct difference in the tone of my pleadings from those of the Texas Attorney General's office. I am not aligned with the Texas Attorney General in how I am pleading. My pleadings, Commissioner, are distinctly different from those of the Texas Attorney General's office. I did not want to be represented by a junior, young associate with the Texas Attorney General's office who clearly did not have a grasp of the issues that I felt were important for the district attorney's office of the 34th Judicial District. I am not going to go into the particular issues in this forum because that is not appropriate. I have legal counsel, as does this court, and the legal issues that this court has brought forward, as are my defense of legal issues, are those for the federal court system. However, I think that if you would review the pleadings, you would see that my pleadings are distinctly different in their position than those of the Texas Attorney General's office. And while I may have received free counsel, respectfully, Commissioner, you get what you pay for. And... And those, I am confident that I would not have received the adequate representation that I deserve and that the people that I represent deserve. I am an official, and I represent the constituents. My constituents are the people of El Paso County, Hutsbath, and El Paso Counties. And I have a duty to represent them, and I feel that I am representing them through my local counsel and through the very, very highly qualified and very professional representation that he has provided. The impact that that has caused, my budget, is very regrettable. And I do agree with you that my, those funds would be much better utilized in training for my office staff, in equipment for my office staff, much better utilized. However, I was forced to utilize my asset forfeiture account because this Commissioners' Court refused to provide funding for me and left with the alternative of a junior associate with the Texas Attorney General's office, which was not aligned with my position, not aligned with my legal theories. And I had very low, low confidence that that junior associate was going to ever understand what I wanted to be and how I wanted to be represented from Austin versus a local attorney who understands the people of my constituency. I felt very strongly that it was appropriate for me to be represented by local counsel who understands the people of this community and how we should be represented. Now, you have referenced the riot cases. Let me explain, Commissioner. I don't care what the immigration status of those individuals are. They endangered lives. They destroyed property. And because of that, those individuals needed to be prosecuted. It has absolutely nothing to do with an individual's immigration status. Every day, individuals come through that Constantine wire and that border wire. Every day, they are not prosecuted. There is no prosecution that happens against them. They are an issue of immigration for the U.S. Border Patrol, and I am perfectly happy and content with that because that is the appropriate procedures, and that is the appropriate way for the U.S. Border Patrol to address immigration issues, not the state of Texas. I am perfectly content with that. However, if individuals get together and they decide to damage property, they decide to endanger lives, they punch and kick and try to take weapons away from Border Patrol and from National Guardsmen, then the state of Texas will step in if I have no guarantee from the U.S. government that they will do anything. And to this date, I have had no guarantee from anyone in the federal government that they are going to do anything about what has happened to those National Guardsmen or to the property that has been damaged. And in lack, with lack of any kind of, with a lack of any kind of recourse from the federal government, I will stand in for those people who have been injured. I will stand in for that property which has been damaged. I will stand in for people whose lives have been threatened and endangered. I will not stand for lawlessness in our county. I will stand up for law and order. I will stand up for law and order. I don't care about an individual's immigration status. That is irrelevant to me. Law and order matters. So I'm sorry if we don't see eye to eye on that, but that's what matters to me, not immigration.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Mr. Hicks, for your very professional response. I also stand for law and order. I believe in that.
You have a long career of that. You've got a short, long career.
And thank you for taking time to come up here and really make it very clear to this court and to our taxpayers what has occurred. So I'd like to make a motion. Erica, if you can assist me here.
Do you want to do this before executive session, Commissioner?
Yes, sir. I would like to do it before. I'd like to make a motion to deny that transfer. Is there any special wording that I need?
Just for the record, thank you, Judge Commissioners, Erika Salas, Nick Aglino, Assistant County Attorney. If we could read, if Mr. Navak could read the corrected items, it would be to deny the transfer of funds. And if you could read the, just for the record, Mr. Navak, the correction that you read earlier, please.
So it would be to deny the district attorney to transfer funds from within the forfeiture account in the amount of $53,500 from special revenue DA spec ops equipment to special revenue DA spec professional services general to cover the cost of legal fees brought on from the SB4 lawsuit against the district attorney. That is your motion to deny, Commissioner Leon.
Erica, just, go ahead, Betsy, please.
That would be the motion to deny, as stated into the record. I do believe there's a recommendation to receive your legal rights and responsibilities in executive session. But if you all want to act on this motion, we need a second, and then we would need a vote.
I just, Erica, if you could help out, do we have that discretion because of the way our budget? Or is that what you're going to discuss in?
We're happy to brief the court in executive session. I mean, you certainly, the court does have discretion for budget transfers, absolutely, to approve or deny budget transfers. If the court wants some additional, you know, questions or additional summary about that more detailed in executive session, we could also, we're happy to do that as well.
And Judge, the reason I want to do it not, I know we don't vote on executive session, but I think this is very critical to our taxpayers, to us, that this be in open session. And that's why I brought it up. And that's why my motion will stand.
Thank you, Commissioner.
There a second to the motion?
So can we go into executive if we have questions before the vote? Or how does, I'm not really sure how that would work.
Well, I was just thinking that we might clarify before the votes maybe some things that we need to understand in order to...
You can table the vote. As Commissioner Leon mentioned, you can't, you cannot take action in executive session. So you can table the vote for now. You can make a motion under 551.071, which is consultation with your lawyers. To go into executive, we could give you our legal advice in executive, and then in open, the motion will still be open, and then you could vote at that time.
Okay, and my motion is very clear. If it fails in public, I'd rather it fail now than going into executive, then come back and vote. So my motion stands, and I would request a vote now. If I don't receive a second, that's fine, but I want it...
You have a second already.
We have a second from Commissioner Stout. Yes, sir.
I apologize.
Okay. The voting is open? Yes, sir.
Okay.
But can that be, so then will we not have the opportunity to go into executive any longer, or?
After the vote, you may go into executive session. You'd have to vote to go into executive session. If anything, if any information in executive session influences or changes the court's mind on the motion, you can reconsider the motion or the item. But there is a live vote now.
But we can come back. So I guess Commissioner Aglino, that'll work for you.
The motion carries. The item is denied.
So now a motion to move into executive, please?
Correct, 551.071. This is legal rights and responsibilities.
Okay.
We need a motion, just one moment. We have a motion from Judge Sanmaniego and a second from Commissioner Aglino to move into executive session. Voting is open. Judge, we just need your vote. Judge, we need your vote to move into executive session. Thank you. The motion carries. Commissioners' Court will recess into executive session to discuss item number 4G pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071. Commissioners' Court will reconvene to take official action.
It's important for your children to stay current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are not eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. I am current on all my vaccines, and I also get the COVID vaccine, so I and my loved ones can be protected. You and your kids should get the vaccine too. And if you've already gotten the vaccine, you should get your booster. For your child's routine vaccines, visit ephealth.com. We know how much you love your children, so remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate.
Es importante que sus hijos tengan todas sus vacunas. Además de las vacunas rutinas, los niños mayores de cinco años ahora son elegibles para la vacuna de COVID-19.
La vacuna COVID-19 es gratis. Para las vacunas rutinas de sus hijos, visite ephealth.com.
Sabemos cuánto amas a tus hijos. Así que recuerda, no lo dudes, vacunate.
Visit the Mission Trail for many reasons. A wealth of history, culture, and arts. You'll be able to taste it. You'll be able to hear it. You'll be able to see it, you'll be able to dance to it.
To know us is to love us. You're gonna meet people as if they're your friends. If you come here to the Mission Trail, you're gonna get a really deep sense of the unity that we have because of this connection that we all have.
I think the Mission Trail has something for everyone. It has history, it has culture. You can learn, you can relax, and you can connect. It just kind of fills your soul.
You definitely want to see everything that we have to offer.
It's just something that you have to see and experience for yourself.
We have something very special going on here, and it's just starting.
The people here are very welcoming. We welcome you to the historic Mission Trail.
My call, I'm here in, but welcome everyone.
It's time to come down and check us out.
Visit the Mission Trail for many reasons. A wealth of history, culture, and arts. You'll be able to taste it. You'll be able to hear it. You'll be able to see it, you'll be able to dance to it.
To know us is to love us. You're gonna meet people as if they're your friends. If you come here to the Mission Trail, you're gonna get a really deep sense of the unity that we have because of this connection that we all have.
I think the Mission Trail has something for everyone. It has history, it has culture. You can learn, you can relax, and you can connect. It just kind of fills your soul.
You definitely want to see everything that we have to offer.
It's just something that you have to see and experience for yourself.
We have something very special going on here, and it's just starting.
The people here are very welcoming. We welcome you to the historic Mission Trail.
My call, I'm here in, but welcome everyone.
It's time to come down and check us out.
Visit the Mission Trail for many reasons. A wealth of history, culture, and arts. You'll be able to taste it. You'll be able to hear it. You'll be able to see it. You'll be able to dance to it.
To know us is to love us. You're going to meet people as if they're your friends. If you come here to the Mission Trail, you're going to get a really deep sense of the unity that we have because of this connection that we all have.
I think the Mission Trail has something for everyone. It has history. It has culture. You can learn. You can relax. And you can connect. It just kind of fills your soul.
You definitely want to see everything that we have to offer.
It's just something that you have to see and experience for yourself.
We have something very special going on here, and it's just starting.
The people here are very welcoming. We welcome you to the historic Mission Trail.
My go, I'm here in, but welcome everyone.
It's time to come down and check us out.
Commissioner's Court has reconvened into regular open session. We are on item number 4G. That is with the correction from the Budget and Finance Department to approve and authorize the district attorney to transfer funds from within the forfeiture account in the amount of $53,500 from Special Revenue DA Spec Ops Equipment to Special Revenue DA Spec Professional Services General to cover the cost of legal fees brought on from the SB 4 lawsuit against the district attorney.
I'll make that motion.
I'll make that motion.
It's important for your children to stay current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are now eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. I am current on all my vaccines, and I also get the COVID vaccine, so I and my loved ones can be protected. You and your kids should get the vaccine too. And if you've already gotten the vaccine, you should get your booster. For your child's routine vaccines, visit ephealth.com. We know how much you love your children. So remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate.
It's important for your children to stay current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are now eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. I am current on all my vaccines, and I also get the COVID vaccine, so I and my loved ones can be protected. You and your kids should get the vaccine too. And if you've already gotten the vaccine, you should get your booster. For your child's routine vaccines, visit ephealth.com. We know how much you love your children. So remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate.
It's important for your children to stay current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are now eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine.
The COVID-19 vaccine is free. For the vaccination routine of your children, visit ephealth.com.
We know how much you love your children. So remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate.
Visit the Mission Trail for many reasons. A wealth of history, culture, and arts. You'll be able to taste it. You'll be able to hear it. You'll be able to see it. You'll be able to dance to it.
To know us is to love us. You're going to meet people as if they're your friends. If you come here to the Mission Trail, you're going to get a really deep sense of the unity that we have because of this connection that we all have.
I think the Mission Trail has something for everyone. It has history. It has culture. You can learn. You can relax. And you can connect. It just kind of fills your soul.
You definitely want to see everything that we have to offer.
It's just something that you have to see and experience for yourself.
We have something very special going on here, and it's just starting.
The people here are very welcoming. We welcome you to the historic Mission Trail.
My go, I'm here in, but welcome everyone.
It's time to come down and check us out.
It's important for your children to stay current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are now eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. I am current on all my vaccines, and I also get the COVID vaccine, so I and my loved ones can be protected. You and your kids should get the vaccine too. And if you've already gotten the vaccine, you should get your booster. For your child's routine vaccines, visit ephealth.com. We know how much you love your children. So remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate.
It's important for your children to stay current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are now eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine.
The COVID-19 vaccine is free. For the vaccination routine of your children, visit ephealth.com.
We know how much you love your children. So remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate.
Visit the Mission Trail for many reasons. A wealth of history, culture, and arts. You'll be able to taste it. You'll be able to hear it. You'll be able to see it. You'll be able to dance to it.
To know us is to love us. You're going to meet people as if they're your friends. If you come here to the Mission Trail, you're going to get a really deep sense of the unity that we have because of this connection that we all have.
I think the Mission Trail has something for everyone. It has history. It has culture. You can learn. You can relax. And you can connect. It just kind of fills your soul.
You definitely want to see everything that we have to offer.
It's just something that you have to see and experience for yourself.
We have something very special going on here, and it's just starting.
The people here are very welcoming. We welcome you to the historic Mission Trail.
My go, I'm here in, but welcome everyone.
It's time to come down and check us out.
Go ahead.
Commissioners, court has reconvened into regular open session. We are on item number 4G. That is with the correction from the Budget and Finance Department to approve and authorize the district attorney to transfer funds from within the forfeiture account in the amount of $53,500 from Special Revenue DA Spec Ops Equipment to Special Revenue DA Spec Professional Services General to cover the cost of legal fees brought on from the SB 4 lawsuit against the district attorney.
Hear this item?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion from Commissioner Leon and a second from Judge Samaniego. The voting is open. Motion carries.
Okay, now if we can have the secondary motion.
Yes, sir. The proposed motion, if the court would like, could be to approve and authorize the district attorney to transfer funds from within the forfeiture account in the amount of $53,500 from SRDA Spec Ops Equipment to SRDA Spec Professional Services General. That would be the motion.
And I'll make that motion, but before, I guess I already pushed the button there. But Mr. Hicks, the main reason that I brought this up is I just wanted to make sure that you understand that I myself, I can't speak for the court, did not approve of this transfer because of the use, ultimate use of those monies. I understand more clearly that I cannot vote to stop you from doing that. I understand that. So I made the motion to have it reconsidered, and I will vote as an "aye" for that reason. Not that I agree with you, but that I have to.
I understand, Commissioner, and I regret that we don't see "aye" to "aye", but I respect you very much. Thank you, sir.
We have a motion from Commissioner Leon and a second from Commissioner Coronado. The voting is open. Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Ron. Welcome, Ron. Thank you for coming back.
I was trying to find a parking spot. Going to City Hall, not here.
Just wanted to let you know, sir, public comment is five minutes. We will be timed.
Oh, no problem. Thank you so much. I see you got the things I sent back in the email. First thing I want to do is, because I live in the city of El Paso, I want to apologize what they've done to the county. Our shelter has operated under this contract since early 2020. I started ringing the warning bell in June of 2020, and nobody listened. And here we are. We got strays. We got attacks. We got everything everywhere. You guys are being told you can't get dogs into your shelter and our shelter per the contract they have with you because they're full. Here's why they're really not doing it. This is what they're following. Has nothing to do with the capacity of the shelter. They don't look forward. They're getting ready to do some work on the school, which is not going to do what we need it to do, but that's another story. Right now, I want you to understand your county animal control people have more respect of the rescues of El Paso than El Paso does. They reach out. They work hard. They're there. We support them. You guys need a shelter. You need to get away from El Paso. As long as we have the fire department running our shelter, this is not going to change. We just, we buried you guys in strays and didn't give you an alternative. Now, that being said, sir, you being in law enforcement, you understand that the city of El Paso is violating rabies laws by not intaking all the strays. They are violating quarantine laws by the way they're operating their quarantine system, which is not being followed by the state law. The shelter is guilty of animal abandonment under Texas law, and yet, nobody does anything about it. I handed the chief the paperwork with the information showing what they're doing and how illegal it is. He thanked me for giving him the information and didn't do anything. So because they've been allowed to break the law for four years, we're all in this situation. Every one of us, every single one of us is dealing with an overload of strays. I am a rescue. Actually, I'm not. I told him no more at the last city council meeting. I'm fed up. I'm tired. Tired of flying all over the country to get in vans to drive dogs. Tired of driving dogs from here all over the country. I'm tired of housing 36 dogs in my house because El Paso Animal Services doesn't want to do the job they're being paid $12 million for. You all are feeling the blunt because your people are pointing the finger at you guys and saying, "Why are you not picking up the strays?" Where are you supposed to put them? You had a contract with the city. They're allowing you, what, one stray a day? My God, guys. I mean, these forms here are the forms that were sent. They basically tell them to use COVID in disguise to get this new plan in place, which is the not picking up strays. It also says to not allow them to go back to the original plan. So Austin Pets Alive came up with this little deal so that they could, you know, collect a lot of money and not do anything. And everybody jumped on board, including El Paso, including our ex-city director, city manager. He went around the country saying what a great job it did. Of course, the man never stepped foot in the shelter, never listened to a word anybody said or called to the public. You know, we have to work together. You all have an idea to build a shelter. I'm fully supporting it because you have the people that right now the rescues and stuff are supporting because they are working hard. I was in a meeting with Oscar Leeser, and I didn't turn my phone off for a reason. I knew at one point or another I would start getting calls from you all about strays. 18 people are on this text message from your animal services people going, "Help, we have these strays." I showed it to Oscar and said, "You know what El Paso does? Nothing." "You know what that does to the rescues? We're going to support the people." They're saying, "Hey, we just got this dog in, and we need help." If you're not going to reach out and talk to us or you're not going to involve us, why should we help you? That's why we're helping county. But county needs your help. We need to let the people of the county know this is not your fault. This is not the fault of your animal control people.
Time?
You tied their hands.
Go ahead, and I'll let you finish. The time's up, but if you could complete your statement.
Elisa Tamayo, Governmental Affairs Manager, for the record, with the July 4, 2024, the fireworks season presentation. As you know, we're coming up on the deadline that the Commissioner's Court can take action in regards to the sales period that runs between June 24 through July 4, and June 15 would be the deadline for all of you to take action. So I wanted to put up our options, as we do every year. The county can do nothing about the sales period. The Commissioners can also adopt an order restricting sky rockets with sticks and missiles with fins, or sticks and fins, once we hit the 575 KBDI index threshold. We are, as of this morning, at 7:50, and we've been above 740 throughout since Thursday, I think, that we posted this item. The third option would be after June 15. That would only be for the county judge to issue a declaration of local disaster if there is an imminent threat of widespread severe damage, injury, or loss of life or property resulting from any natural or man-made cause, including fire. And these are, you know, the requirements for that to happen as well. The KBDI, as I mentioned, and this is an updated backup, by the way, in Keys of Public is looking at what was posted on Friday. The numbers have changed over the weekend, so we wanted to update or give you the most updated KBDI numbers. The average for El Paso as of today is 750, and we can see our neighboring counties are also above 700. I'm sorry for the typo here in Culberson, but everybody's above 600, and El Paso being the driest. I believe at some point during the weekend, El Paso had the highest KBDI index of all the counties in Texas, so that's just something to consider and keep in mind. The forecast fire danger as of June 9, which is the latest that we have available, is it's putting El Paso County in a very high fire danger. You can see the map here that the next one would be extreme. We were at extreme on Friday, and I'm not sure the, you know, the weather factors have brought it a little bit down, but we're still, you know, in a very high fire danger. The U.S. Drought Monitor has about half of our county listed as extreme drought, and the other part is in severe drought. So again, it's higher than this time of the year last year. I think last year, we were not quite at the 575 threshold, so no action was taken last year. The year prior, we were, but then we got some rains right before 4th of July, which nullified the order. So today, our recommendation would be what we have posted on the backup, the order that we posted on the backup, which would be banning the sale of rockets with sticks and missiles with fins during the July 4, 2024 holiday season. Do you have any questions?
No, just would like to give some background, if you don't mind. Yeah, we were able to meet with the vendors. I think we've done a great job year after year to make sure that we understand. I think the public is supportive of the fact that, you know, they do incredible fundraisers, a lot of volunteers helping, they've been very cooperative during the pandemic. They did everything from the signs, wearing the mask, everything else. We've had a great relationship with them, and of course, it's a small business. And a couple of factors that I always take into consideration is that I think during the pandemic, we banned it, banned it, but then we had all of this influx from New Mexico. So they have no restrictions, so their ability to buy fireworks in New Mexico is unlimited, and so people gravitate, and then they go buy them in New Mexico and come here. We don't get any revenue, so we find ourselves in even a more critical situation. So I take that into consideration. I also took into consideration that the vendors are extremely responsible, you know, of how they do things. But before, that's sort of the background that, you know, that I do encourage, that we do, you know, they've agreed, voluntarily agreed with sticks and fins, that they would not have that as part of their sale, and so that's something that is comforting. The thing is, I've been advised by legal that we still have to make sure that we say that no sticks and fins, because then we make it official. So just a verbal discussion of no sticks and fins at this point is not sufficient. So then the court would have to vote on saying that we're banning sticks and fins, and that way, they can't come back and utilize them, and then we haven't made something official. So that's where we are. But I would like to hear from Chief, Chief Esparsa, just any additional comments. I know, and I thank you because you work so close with them and myself, and you've been a great liaison, not only, while we forget about it, and there's still things to be done after the fireworks commission, I'm sorry, Chief is still involved in the process. So Chief, you want to go ahead and--
Good morning, Commissioner. Chief Esparsa with El Paso County, U.C., number two. We did have a meeting, like the judge says, with all the fireworks vendors. Not only did they agree to not sell sticks and fins, they also agreed that they would put the dumpsters out there to not have a cost to the county. They understand that they're also going to get some nonprofit groups that are going to go pick up trash, and it's part of the things that they're trying to do. This was a message that was broadcasted to all, even the smaller vendors, because they all buy from the same supplier. So it's one of the things that they've all agreed to, that that way, they're trying to do their part with the county.
Well, thank you. So Erica, I would like to make the motion on the no sticks and fins to make it official, and so however you want to, if you could help me with a motion to that.
We also have one of our fireworks vendors here, Mr. Vidal Montes. I just want to acknowledge that he has been working with the county and actively--
You're very--
Yeah, agreeing--
You're very welcome to say a few words. And once again, thank you for the collaboration.
Yes, I want to thank the Commission, especially Roger Esparsa, the Commission that I've worked for, you know, behind the scenes fireworks is something that you see from June 24 to July 4, but it's a year-round job for us, guys like me that are involved with the community and trying to get business going and help these groups fundraise. I've been teaching high school science for 38 years and network through every school practically in El Paso County, and that's, and Mr. Coronado would know that, that we do a lot, and some of the other vendors that do the same thing. So, you know, this is, it is a privilege to be able to sell fireworks in El Paso County. It's not a given, never has been, and I really appreciate that this court has come a long way to help out. Talking with Mr. Nevada, Ms. Wildman, some of the bigger vendors here, we have public service announcements coming out. We got, safety is going to be the number one priority for sure, and then also to clean up in the trash and stuff like that. That being said, on a Thursday, probably will boost our sales. Last year, it was on a Tuesday, people had to work on Monday, had to go back to work on Wednesday, and it really hit us hard, and the extreme, you know, weather was something that did affect us. But I'm hoping that the rains will come late June, early July. It makes everybody happy, keeps the environment a little bit cooler. So if you have any questions for me, reach out anytime, anything that you can suggest to us, that would be, that would be awesome, that, you know, you make a suggestion, bring it to me. I do have a lot of, I've been here a long time, so, you know, I think I got a lot of influence in the community as far as getting fireworks sold and sold the correct way and be safe with them. So I really appreciate everything you guys have done for me, and also, again, Roger has been a great, great contact in the years that we've worked together.
And thank you. It makes things a little easier with the commitment that you've made, so we've made the motion.
And thank you particularly for the initiative with the trash cans, for offering those--
Oh, yeah.
Because trash is always a complaint that we receive about trash out in the desert areas. So thank you for taking that initiative and to all of the vendors who are pitching in to make that possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Olgin.
Go ahead. We have a motion from Judge Samaniego and a second from Commissioner Coronado. The voting is open. Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, Elisa. Chief?
Item number 9A from Economic Development. Discuss and take appropriate action regarding the county's participation as the lead agency for the National Park Service Rivers, Trails, and Conservation Assistance Program grant opportunity secured by the City of El Paso and El Paso Chamber of Commerce.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. Cristian Martinez, Economic Development Manager. Here with an item, really requesting your direction regarding a recent grant opportunity that was brought to our attention by the city, and the city and the chamber were recently selected as an award for technical assistance through a grant opportunity through the National Park Service, specifically under their Rivers, Trails, and Conservation Assistance Program. We have a couple of slides here, not too many, that just provide some background and some further context as to this grant award and what it entails, and then we'll be asking the court for further direction. And so just as an overview on this opportunity, this grant program is one that is intended to support locally-led conservation and outdoor recreation projects in the U.S., specifically assisting communities in developing or restoring parks, conservation areas, rivers, wildlife habitats, as well as creating outdoor recreation opportunities for engaging the youth, right, and the generations in the outdoors. It does not provide any monetary assistance. It's strictly technical assistance in this regard. The city and the chamber, as I mentioned earlier, applied for this technical assistance program on behalf of the Mission Trail Alliance Program, which is a conglomerate of stakeholders, right, working on the Mission Trail that I'm sure you're all familiar with, and they were selected for an award back in May 15 of last month for a project they've dubbed the History in Developing Infrastructure and Assets for the Mission Trail. The project cycle for this would really span from spring 2024 over to summer 2025, and recently, the city approached us about this opportunity and enjoining them as a recipient, right, an award recipient alongside the chamber and alongside the city, largely as a result of transition happening in both organizations, specifically as it pertains to those representatives who would work on this grant opportunity, and also because much of the scope of work for the project would also fall within the jurisdiction and the authority of the county along those Mission Trail assets. And so I have Dr. Renteria here this morning as well to go over the alignment and what this opportunity could provide and how this would align with our county goals and strategic plan, and then we'll discuss the recommendation from the staff.
Thank you, Cristian. Dr. Renteria, for the record. Good morning, Commissioners, Court, and Judge. Really quick, just to add to the overview that Christian presented, the value added here, although it is not a monetary grant, the value added here is working with the National Park staff, getting their staff to work on some of our initiatives, to do some of the groundwork for us, to move our plan forward. And the original intent of the application was for the City of El Paso to be the fiscal agent and for the chamber to take sort of a leadership role because of their role on the Mission Trail Association, so that will not change. We are just simply asking for your direction to add the county as part of that process. The awarded project, the grant award, asked for several different assistance, technical assistance, and they were awarded to develop transportation, safety, and equitable access infrastructure, which includes create an active transportation walking group, plan to complete streets workshop to host those meetings, develop and engage process to connect communities to the trail, support project partners with implementation on the community engagement process. The other area that was awarded was research the possibilities for UNESCO designation. So identify participants for an UNESCO panel, conduct outreach to the NPS staff, and provide an insight to the Mission Trail Alliance about the UNESCO designation. So how is this going to work? What are our first steps? And then there's, you know, other examples that we've included here, but really, this is to get that conversation started and to ensure that the county has a leadership role in seeking the UNESCO designation. So, and it will also support partners, our partners at the Mission Trail Alliance, and help us coordinate the meetings. And I'm going to speak to you really briefly about how this lines up with the plans that the county has. So in the application itself, the city and the chamber cited our 2019 Mission Trail Comprehensive Plan, and in this plan, we have a few of what's outlined are the big ideas of the plan. And so two of them are protect and enhance historic assets in agriculture and add trails to improve streets and connect the Mission Valley. So the award that was given in technical assistance and the two goals that I just outlined line up with two of the big ideas outlined in the Mission Trail Comprehensive Plan. One is the UNESCO World Heritage Site Designation, and the other one is to support safety and connectivity and user-friendliness of the trail itself along Socorro Road. So this is how the initiative that was awarded aligns with our plan and our strategic plan. The roles and responsibilities. So again, access to the National Park staff and broader network. This also familiarizes our staff with how NPS works and other opportunities that might come up, that we could definitely apply for. Will be coordinated with the City of El Paso, who will continue to be the fiscal agent and who has dedicated staff working on this project, and coordinate with the chamber, who also has a dedicated staff working on this project and with the Mission Trail Alliance. And the role for the Mission Trail and the county is part of the Mission Trail Alliance is to communicate, organize, and coordinate with partners, continue attending the meetings, engage partners and participants in these planning efforts, manage the communications and organizations, and through existing communication resources, and then contribute to volunteer hours as needed for project development and implementation. Again, as Christian mentioned, out of all the entities that participate in the Mission Trail Alliance, the county is the only entity that has jurisdiction across the entire Mission Trail, and of course, we work with our partners in Isla de San Elizario and Socorro. And we also have Mr. Omar Martinez from the City of El Paso present, and we may have Romi from the chamber online, but she did let us know this morning that she was going from meeting to meeting, so she may not be able to hop on. She did want to be here in person, so we have met with both the chamber and the city, and we think that adding the county as an award recipient to that, to make it a three-way partnership, is really in the best interest of the Mission Trail, but Christian is going to present.
Chris?
Thank you, Dr. Renteria. So as Dr. Renteria mentions, we've coordinated with the city and with the chamber to get some additional details related to this and bring it to you before you all today. We're happy to take any questions you all may have regarding this grant opportunity at this time, but as a result of those meetings, staff is recommending proceeding with the county joining these two partners in this endeavor as a result of the alignment with the Mission Comprehensive Plan, as Dr. Renteria outlined. So happy to take any questions you all may have.
Just want to thank you, Cynthia, for just your passion on this and everything that you do. Thank you on Friday for that tour, which I thought was very successful. Got great comments about your success and your leadership there, so just want to start off by thank you for that. Any other questions? Commissioner Olgin?
Thank you. No, I just want to say, this is just an incredible opportunity for the county to really advance our vision of the Mission Trail. So when we, when several of us came together to form the Mission Trail Alliance, this is exactly the reason that we wanted to do it, and one of the first things that we set up as a goal was to apply for grants, that would provide us this type of technical assistance. So I want to thank Omar for all of his hard work at the city to submit the grant application, and of course, our partners at the chamber. But I think the statement that Dr. Renteria made about the county really being the only entity that has jurisdiction over the entire Mission Trail, I mean, it makes total and complete sense that we would play a large part in this particular opportunity, and everyone on the Mission Trail Alliance is wholeheartedly dedicated to making the Mission Trail a success, but we do need a little bit of that guidance. The UNESCO designation would be absolutely transformative, but we do need that help. We do need that guidance. So I think this would be an incredible, incredible opportunity. And again, I just want to thank our partners at the chamber, at the city, the City of Socorro, the City of San Elizario, the Mission Trail Association. We have several small businesses who are also involved with the Mission Trail Alliance. It really is a very impressive collaboration of all of the stakeholders that are directly impacted there along the trail, and I think this is just a wonderful opportunity to advance our vision even more.
Thank you. And Omar, we'd love to hear from you as well, and thank you for this partnership. Thank you.
Morning. Omar Martinez with the City of El Paso. This opportunity came about, the only reason the city applied as lead agency is because Dr. Renteria wasn't on board yet. There was a transition between economic development. There's been a lot of transitions, and so this is why the city took the lead, but we always envisioned making sure the county was included. So now, we're doing that administrative step to make sure that the partnership is solid, but this is just one of-- But this is just one of many examples of city-county partnerships. Want to make sure that the Mission Trail, like other transportation and community development projects, we go about these together. And I'm committing myself to support implementations. When our findings come from this project, when it comes down to get the writing done and get the money for construction, please count on me and your staff to support them. We already offer technical assistance to Socorro, to San Elizario on their applications. Happy to keep helping.
Thank you, Dr. Renteria. What a compliment. They're waiting for you to be here with us. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you to Omar. And I believe we do have Ms. Romi from the chamber on virtually.
Who's that?
Romi.
Romi Reese with the chamber.
Okay.
Romi, do you want to go ahead and unmute?
Let me turn on my...
Are you?
Good morning, everybody. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you all so much. We're very excited for this partnership. Just to echo what Omar indicated, that makes perfect sense for the county to jump on board with this grant, and I'm excited to work with Dr. Renteria and the team at the county to enhance the project and to really do what we can to make the MTA a really great situation and help all those businesses along the trail to really showcase their wonderful work, and really, it's just another boon for this community. So excited to help, and the chamber is thrilled to be able to bring them on board.
Thank you, Miss. Commissioner Olgin said the power of this partnership. I mean, this is actually, what she was saying makes a lot of sense, that this is what we're looking for, and here we are. And so, grants and partnership, I think that'll really help us expedite. So thank you, Romi. Appreciate it.
Really quick, before there are any other questions, I do want to highlight that we should think of this more of a planning grant. So we're still a step away from implementation, but it brings us a step forward from our Mission Trail Comprehensive Plan, right, which outlines the ideas and the goals. So this is getting us toward implementation.
Thank you, Dr. Renteria. Appreciate it. Christian, thank you so much.
Thank you all. If there are no further questions, we'd only ask the decision from the court.
We have a motion from Commissioner Olgin and a second from the judge. Voting is open. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you, Omar.
Is there another item you'd like to take, Judge, or would you like to...
No, I think we're right at 12. I'm good with our... I'm going to have Christina's motion. Anything we need to worry about for this break?
I believe that Mr. Gonzalez has a specific item. You want us to hear?
Probably break for lunch.
Yeah, I didn't realize Mr. Gonzalez was here. Yeah, we'll go ahead and take Mr. Gonzalez's item.
That's item 10C in executive session. So if the court would like to take up that item, we could go into executive session just for that item if the court would like. That's item 10C.
I just would hate for... Go ahead and take that. We'll take that one in particular, just so we don't hold back Mr. Gonzalez.
Okay, yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you. So, we are going to move into executive session to discuss item 10C pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071. Commissioners, Court will reconvene to take official action.
It just kind of fills your soul.
You definitely want to see everything that we have to offer.
It's just something that you have to see and experience for yourself.
We have something very special going on here, and it's just starting.
The people here are very welcoming. We welcome you to the Historic Mission Trail.
My go, I'm heading back. Welcome everyone.
It's time to come down and check us out.
Go ahead. Commissioner's Court has reconvened into regular open session. Here on item number 11B. Discuss and take appropriate action on the pending claim of Concepcion Jimenez Flores, County Attorney's File Number 006724LC.
Good afternoon, Judge Commissioners Eric Rosales and Gaglione Assistant County Attorney. The motion for your consideration would be to send a denial letter pertaining to this matter as discussed in executive session.
I have a motion from Commissioner Olgin and a second from the judge. I'm sorry, Commissioner Coronado. Voting is open. And motion carries. Judge, would you like to go ahead and recess for the afternoon?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Commissioner's Court will now recess. For one hour. It is 12:11 PM.
To know us is to love us. You're going to meet people as if they're your friends. If you come here to the Mission Trail, you're going to get a really deep sense of the unity that we have because of this connection that we all have.
I think the Mission Trail has something for everyone. It has history, it has culture, you can learn, you can relax, and you can connect. It just kind of fills your soul.
You definitely want to see everything that we have to offer.
It's just something that you have to see and experience for yourself.
We have something very special going on here, and it's just starting.
The people here are very welcoming. We welcome you to the Historic Mission Trail.
My go, I'm heading back. Welcome everyone.
It's time to come down and check us out.
Visit the Mission Trail for many reasons. A wealth of history, culture, and arts.
You'll be able to taste it. You'll be able to hear it. You'll be able to see it. You'll be able to dance to it.
To know us is to love us. You're going to meet people as if they're your friends. If you come here to the Mission Trail, you're going to get a really deep sense of the unity that we have because of this connection that we all have.
I think the Mission Trail has something for everyone. It has history, it has culture, you can learn, you can relax, and you can connect. It just kind of fills your soul.
You definitely want to see everything that we have to offer.
It's just something that you have to see and experience for yourself.
We have something very special going on here, and it's just starting.
The people here are very welcoming. We welcome you to the Historic Mission Trail.
My go, I'm heading back. Welcome everyone.
It's time to come down and check us out.
It's important for your children to stay current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are not eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. I am current on all my vaccines, and I also get the COVID vaccine so I and my loved ones can be protected. You and your kids should get the vaccine too, and if you've already gotten the vaccine, you should get your booster. For your child's routine vaccines, visit ephealth.com. We know how much you love your children, so remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate. It's important for your children to stay current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are not eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. I am current on all my vaccines, and I also get the COVID vaccine so I and my loved ones can be protected. You and your kids should get the vaccine too, and if you've already gotten the vaccine, you should get your booster. For your child's routine vaccines, visit ephealth.com. We know how much you love your children, so remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate.
Visit the Mission Trail for many reasons. A wealth of history, culture, and arts. You'll be able to taste it. You'll be able to hear it. You'll be able to see it. You'll be able to dance to it.
To know us is to love us. You're going to meet people as if they're your friends. If you come here to the Mission Trail, you're going to get a really deep sense of the unity that we have because of this connection that we all have.
I think the Mission Trail has something for everyone. It has history, it has culture, you can learn, you can relax, and you can connect. It just kind of fills your soul.
You definitely want to see everything that we have to offer.
It's just something that you have to see and experience for yourself.
We have something very special going on here, and it's just starting.
The people here are very welcoming. We welcome you to the Historic Mission Trail.
My go, I'm heading back. Welcome everyone.
It's time to come down and check us out.
It's important for your children to stay current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are not eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. I am current on all my vaccines, and I also get the COVID vaccine so I and my loved ones can be protected. You and your kids should get the vaccine too, and if you've already gotten the vaccine, you should get your booster. For your child's routine vaccines, visit ephealth.com. We know how much you love your children, so remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate.
Visit the Mission Trail for many reasons. A wealth of history, culture, and arts. You'll be able to taste it. You'll be able to hear it. You'll be able to see it. You'll be able to dance to it.
To know us is to love us. You're going to meet people as if they're your friends. If you come here to the Mission Trail, you're going to get a really deep sense of the unity that we have because of this connection that we all have.
I think the Mission Trail has something for everyone. It has history, it has culture, you can learn, you can relax, and you can connect. It just kind of fills your soul.
You definitely want to see everything that we have to offer.
It's just something that you have to see and experience for yourself.
We have something very special going on here, and it's just starting.
The people here are very welcoming. We welcome you to the Historic Mission Trail.
My go, I'm heading back. Welcome everyone.
It's time to come down and check us out.
The people here are very welcoming. The people here are very welcoming. We welcome you to the Historic Mission Trail. We welcome you to the Historic Mission Trail.
Mako, I'm Heringba. Welcome everyone. Mako, I'm Heringba. Welcome everyone.
It's time to come down and check us out. It's time to come down and check us out.
It's important for your children to stay current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are now eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. I am current on all my vaccines and I also get the COVID vaccine so I and my loved ones can be protected. You and your kids should get the vaccine too. And if you've already gotten the vaccine, you should get your booster. For your child's routine vaccines, visit EPhealth.com. We know how much you love your children, so remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate.
It's important for your children to stay current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are now eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. The COVID-19 vaccine is free. For the vaccines and routines of your children, visit EPhealth.com. We know how much you love your children, so remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate.
Visit the Mission Trail for many reasons. A wealth of history, culture, and arts. You'll be able to taste it. You'll be able to hear it. You'll be able to see it, you'll be able to dance to it.
To know us is to love us. You're gonna meet people as if they're your friends. If you come here to the Mission Trail, you're gonna get a really deep sense of the unity that we have because of this connection that we all have.
I think the Mission Trail has something for everyone. It has history, it has culture, you can learn, you can relax, and you can connect. It just kind of fills your soul.
You definitely want to see everything that we have to offer.
It's just something that you have to see and experience for yourself.
We have something very special going on here, and it's just starting.
The people here are very welcoming. We welcome you to the historic Mission Trail.
My go, I'm here in Ba. Welcome everyone.
It's time to come down and check us out.
It's important for your children to stay current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are now eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. I am current on all my vaccines and I also get the COVID vaccine so I and my loved ones can be protected. You and your kids should get the vaccine too. And if you've already gotten the vaccine, you should get your booster. For your child's routine vaccines, visit EPhealth.com. We know how much you love your children, so remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate.
It's important for your children to stay current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are now eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. The COVID-19 vaccine is free. For the vaccines and routines of your children, visit EPhealth.com. We know how much you love your children, so remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate.
Visit the Mission Trail for many reasons. A wealth of history, culture, and arts. You'll be able to taste it. You'll be able to hear it. You'll be able to see it, you'll be able to dance to it.
To know us is to love us. You're gonna meet people as if they're your friends. If you come here to the Mission Trail, you're gonna get a really deep sense of the unity that we have because of this connection that we all have.
I think the Mission Trail has something for everyone. It has history, it has culture, you can learn, you can relax, and you can connect. It just kind of fills your soul.
You definitely want to see everything that we have to offer.
It's just something that you have to see and experience for yourself.
We have something very special going on here, and it's just starting.
The people here are very welcoming. We welcome you to the historic Mission Trail.
My go, I'm here in Ba. Welcome everyone.
It's time to come down and check us out.
It's important for your children to stay current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are now eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. I am current on all my vaccines and I also get the COVID vaccine so I and my loved ones can be protected. You and your kids should get the vaccine too. And if you've already gotten the vaccine, you should get your booster. For your child's routine vaccines, visit EPhealth.com. We know how much you love your children, so remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate.
It's important for your children to stay current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are now eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. The COVID-19 vaccine is free. For the vaccines and routines of your children, visit EPhealth.com. We know how much you love your children, so remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate.
Visit the Mission Trail for many reasons. A wealth of history, culture, and arts. You'll be able to taste it. You'll be able to hear it. You'll be able to see it, you'll be able to dance to it.
To know us is to love us. You're gonna meet people as if they're your friends. If you come here to the Mission Trail, you're gonna get a really deep sense of the unity that we have because of this connection that we all have.
I think the Mission Trail has something for everyone. It has history, it has culture, you can learn, you can relax, and you can connect. It just kind of fills your soul.
You definitely want to see everything that we have to offer.
It's just something that you have to see and experience for yourself.
We have something very special going on here, and it's just starting.
The people here are very welcoming. We welcome you to the historic Mission Trail.
My go, I'm here in Ba. Welcome everyone.
It's time to come down and check us out.
It's important for your children to stay current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are now eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. I am current on all my vaccines and I also get the COVID vaccine so I and my loved ones can be protected. You and your kids should get the vaccine too. And if you've already gotten the vaccine, you should get your booster. For your child's routine vaccines, visit EPhealth.com. We know how much you love your children, so remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate.
It's important for your children to stay current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are now eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. The COVID-19 vaccine is free. For the vaccines and routines of your children, visit EPhealth.com. We know how much you love your children, so remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate.
Visit the Mission Trail for many reasons. A wealth of history, culture, and arts. You'll be able to taste it. You'll be able to hear it. You'll be able to see it, you'll be able to dance to it.
To know us is to love us. You're gonna meet people as if they're your friends. If you come here to the Mission Trail, you're gonna get a really deep sense of the unity that we have because of this connection that we all have.
I think the Mission Trail has something for everyone. It has history, it has culture, you can learn, you can relax, and you can connect. It just kind of fills your soul.
You definitely want to see everything that we have to offer.
It's just something that you have to see and experience for yourself.
We have something very special going on here, and it's just starting.
The people here are very welcoming. We welcome you to the historic Mission Trail.
My go, I'm heading back. Welcome everyone.
It's time to come down and check us out.
Stand by. Go ahead. Commissioners Court has reconvened into regular open session. It is 1:20 PM. Before we go into executive session, we have a couple of items that we would like the court to take some action on. Item number 10B from executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071. Discuss legal rights and responsibilities regarding litigation styled United States versus Texas. Number 24-50149, county attorney's file number 016523PL. We'd like to delete this item as well as the corresponding regular session item 11A. Could we... Could we have a motion to delete the items? We have a motion from Commissioner Olgin and a second from Judge Samaniego. The voting is open. Stout?
Yeah, it's my computer is acting up again.
A motion carries. Commissioners Court will now recess into executive session.
Mr. Navas, excuse me, I just have the...
I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. I'll just read them, yes.
Item number 10E. Pursuant to Texas Local Government Code Section 551.071 and 551.0725. Discuss legal rights and responsibilities and contract negotiations regarding existing agreements and related milestones of all community partners and agencies under the Notice of Funding Opportunity Subrecipients and Beneficiaries Program using ARPA funds.
Judge Commissioners Eric Rosales and Guy Leoni, Assistant County Attorney. We're asking for this item 10E to be taken into executive under 551.071 as well as 551.0725. As a reminder, that exclusion is for contract negotiations, so I'll just read the memo into the record. The Open Meetings Act authorizes the Commissioners Court to conduct a closed meeting to deliberate business and financial issues relating to a contract under negotiations. If the three conditions are met, first, that the court votes unanimously, the deliberation in open would have a detrimental effect on the position of the court in negotiations with a third party. The attorney advising you makes a written determination that an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on your position, and a tape recording of the proceedings in closed session is made. So this memo is to fulfill the requirement in number two. I've determined that deliberation in an open meeting concerning business and financial issues relating to the Notice of Funding Opportunity Subrecipients and Beneficiaries Program to assist individuals and households adversely impacted by COVID-19 with multiple community partners and agencies would have a detrimental effect if it were to discuss in open session due to negotiations. So we're asking for that unanimous vote, again, that in an open meeting it would have a detrimental effect, that all deliberations take place in closed session, and that the court direct the county clerk to ensure that all proceedings in closed session are recorded, and a copy of this memo has been filed with the clerk's representative. So if I could just have that motion, please.
We're having trouble right now. If we could just have a motion in a second, please.
Second.
Commissioner Olgin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon? Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Coronado?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego? Motion carries. Commissioners Court will now recess into executive session to discuss items 10A through 10E and addendum item number 12. Pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071 and 551.0725. Commissioners Court will reconvene to take official action. It is 1:24 PM.
It's important for your children to stay current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are now eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. I am current on all my vaccines and I also get the COVID vaccine so I and my loved ones can be protected. You and your kids should get the vaccine too. And if you've already gotten the vaccine, you should get your booster. For your child's routine vaccines, visit ephealth.com. We know how much you love your children, so remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate.
Es importante que sus hijos tengan todas sus vacunas. Además de las vacunas rutinas, los niños mayores de cinco años ahora son elegibles para la vacuna de COVID-19.
La vacuna COVID-19 es gratis para las vacunas rutinas de sus hijos, visite ephealth.com.
Sabemos cuánto amas a tus hijos, así que recuerda, no lo dudes, vacunate.
Visit the Mission Trail for many reasons, a wealth of history, culture, and arts. You'll be able to taste it. You'll be able to hear it. You'll be able to see it, you'll be able to dance to it.
To know us is to love us. You're gonna meet people as if they're your friends. If you come here to the Mission Trail, you're gonna get a really deep sense of the unity that we have because of this connection that we all have.
I think the Mission Trail has something for everyone. It has history, it has culture, you can learn, you can relax, and you can connect. It just kind of fills your soul.
You definitely want to see everything that we have to offer.
It's just something that you have to see and experience for yourself.
We have something very special going on here, and it's just starting.
The people here are very welcoming. We welcome you to the historic Mission Trail.
My go, I'm heading back. Welcome everyone.
It's time to come down and check us out.
It's important for your children to stay current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are now eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. I am current on all my vaccines and I also get the COVID vaccine so I and my loved ones can be protected. You and your kids should get the vaccine too. And if you've already gotten the vaccine, you should get your booster. For your child's routine vaccines, visit ephealth.com. We know how much you love your children, so remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate.
Es importante que sus hijos tengan todas sus vacunas. Además de las vacunas rutinas, los niños mayores de cinco años ahora son elegibles para la vacuna de COVID-19.
La vacuna COVID-19 es gratis. Para las vacunas rutinas de sus hijos, visite EPhealth.com.
Sabemos cuánto amas a tus hijos. Así que recuerda, no lo dudes, vacunate.
Visit the Mission Trail for many reasons. A wealth of history, culture, and arts. You'll be able to taste it. You'll be able to hear it. You'll be able to see it, you'll be able to dance to it.
To know us is to love us. You're gonna meet people as if they're your friends. If you come here to the Mission Trail, you're gonna get a really deep sense of the unity that we have because of this connection that we all have.
I think the Mission Trail has something for everyone. It has history, it has culture, you can learn, you can relax, and you can connect. It just kind of fills your soul.
You definitely want to see everything that we have to offer.
It's just something that you have to see and experience for yourself.
We have something very special going on here, and it's just starting.
The people here are very welcoming. We welcome you to the historic Mission Trail.
Mako, I'm Heringba. Welcome everyone.
It's time to come down and check us out.
I'm current on all my vaccines and I also get the COVID vaccine so I and my loved ones can be protected. You and your kids should get the vaccine too, and if you've already gotten the vaccine, you should get your booster. For your child's routine vaccines, visit EPhealth.com.
We know how much you love your children, so remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate.
Es importante que sus hijos tengan todas sus vacunas. Además de las vacunas rutinas, los niños mayores de cinco años ahora son elegibles para la vacuna de COVID-19.
La vacuna COVID-19 es gratis para las vacunas rutinas de sus hijos, visite EPhealth.com.
Sabemos cuánto amas a tus hijos, así que recuerda, no lo dudes, vacunate.
Visit the Mission Trail for many reasons, a wealth of history, culture, and arts. You'll be able to taste it. You'll be able to hear it. You'll be able to see it, you'll be able to dance to it.
To know us is to love us. You're gonna meet people as if they're your friends. If you come here to the Mission Trail, you're gonna get a really deep sense of the unity that we have because of this connection that we all have.
I think the Mission Trail has something for everyone. It has history, it has culture, you can learn, you can relax, and you can connect. It just kind of fills your soul.
You definitely want to see everything that we have to offer.
It's just something that you have to see and experience for yourself.
We have something very special going on here, and it's just starting. The people here are very welcoming. We welcome you to the historic Mission Trail.
Mako, I'm Heringba. Welcome everyone. It's time to come down and check us out.
It's important for your children to stay current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are now eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. I'm current on all my vaccines and I also get the COVID vaccine so I and my loved ones can be protected. You and your kids should get the vaccine too, and if you've already gotten the vaccine, you should get your booster. For your child's routine vaccines, visit EPhealth.com. We know how much you love your children, so remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate.
Visit the Mission Trail for many reasons, a wealth of history, culture, and arts. You'll be able to taste it. You'll be able to hear it. You'll be able to see it, you'll be able to dance to it.
To know us is to love us. You're gonna meet people as if they're your friends. If you come here to the Mission Trail, you're gonna get a really deep sense of the unity that we have because of this connection that we all have.
I think the Mission Trail has something for everyone. It has history, it has culture, you can learn, you can relax, and you can connect. It just kind of fills your soul.
You definitely want to see everything that we have to offer.
It's just something that you have to see and experience for yourself.
We have something very special going on here, and it's just starting. The people here are very welcoming. We welcome you to the historic Mission Trail.
Mako, I'm Heringba. Welcome everyone. It's time to come down and check us out.
It's important for your children to stay current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are now eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. I'm current on all my vaccines and I also get the COVID vaccine so I and my loved ones can be protected. You and your kids should get the vaccine too. And if you've already gotten the vaccine, you should get your booster. For your child's routine vaccines, visit EPhealth.com. We know how much you love your children, so remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate.
It's important for your children to stay current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are now eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. I'm current on all my vaccines and I also get the COVID vaccine so I and my loved ones can be protected. You and your kids should get the vaccine too. And if you've already gotten the vaccine, you should get your booster. For your child's routine vaccines, visit EPhealth.com. We know how much you love your children, so remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate.
It's important for your children to stay current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are now eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. I'm current on all my vaccines and I also get the COVID vaccine so I and my loved ones can be protected. You and your kids should get the vaccine too. And if you've already gotten the vaccine, you should get your booster. For your child's routine vaccines, visit EPhealth.com. We know how much you love your children, so remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate.
It's important for your children to stay current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are now eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. I'm current on all my vaccines and I also get the COVID vaccine so I and my loved ones can be protected. You and your kids should get the vaccine too. And if you've already gotten the vaccine, you should get your booster. For your child's routine vaccines, visit EPhealth.com. We know how much you love your children, so remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate.
It's important for your children to stay current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are now eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. I'm current on all my vaccines and I also get the COVID vaccine so I and my loved ones can be protected. You and your kids should get the vaccine too. And if you've already gotten the vaccine, you should get your booster. For your child's routine vaccines, visit EPhealth.com. We know how much you love your children, so remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate.
It's important for your children to stay current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are now eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. I'm current on all my vaccines and I also get the COVID vaccine so I and my loved ones can be protected. You and your kids should get the vaccine too. And if you've already gotten the vaccine, you should get your booster. For your child's routine vaccines, visit EPhealth.com. We know how much you love your children, so remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate.
It's important for your children to stay current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are now eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. I'm current on all my vaccines and I also get the COVID vaccine so I and my loved ones can be protected. You and your kids should get the vaccine too. And if you've already gotten the vaccine, you should get your booster. For your child's routine vaccines, visit EPhealth.com. We know how much you love your children, so remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate.
It's important for your children to stay current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are now eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. I'm current on all my vaccines and I also get the COVID vaccine so I and my loved ones can be protected. You and your kids should get the vaccine too. And if you've already gotten the vaccine, you should get your booster. For your child's routine vaccines, visit EPhealth.com. We know how much you love your children, so remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate.
It's important for your children to stay current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are now eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. I'm current on all my vaccines and I also get the COVID vaccine so I and my loved ones can be protected. You and your kids should get the vaccine too. And if you've already gotten the vaccine, you should get your booster. For your child's routine vaccines, visit EPhealth.com. We know how much you love your children, so remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate.
It's important for your children to stay current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are now eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. I'm current on all my vaccines and I also get the COVID vaccine so I and my loved ones can be protected. You and your kids should get the vaccine too. And if you've already gotten the vaccine, you should get your booster. For your child's routine vaccines, visit EPhealth.com. We know how much you love your children, so remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate.
It's important for your children to stay current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are now eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. I'm current on all my vaccines and I also get the COVID vaccine so I and my loved ones can be protected. You and your kids should get the vaccine too. And if you've already gotten the vaccine, you should get your booster. For your child's routine vaccines, visit EPhealth.com. We know how much you love your children, so remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate.
It's important for your children to stay current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are now eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. I'm current on all my vaccines and I also get the COVID vaccine so I and my loved ones can be protected. You and your kids should get the vaccine too. And if you've already gotten the vaccine, you should get your booster. For your child's routine vaccines, visit EPhealth.com. We know how much you love your children, so remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate.
It's important for your children to stay current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are now eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. I'm current on all my vaccines and I also get the COVID vaccine so I and my loved ones can be protected. You and your kids should get the vaccine too. And if you've already gotten the vaccine, you should get your booster. For your child's routine vaccines, visit EPhealth.com. We know how much you love your children, so remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate.
It's important for your children to stay current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are now eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. I'm current on all my vaccines and I also get the COVID vaccine so I and my loved ones can be protected. You and your kids should get the vaccine too. And if you've already gotten the vaccine, you should get your booster. For your child's routine vaccines, visit EPhealth.com. We know how much you love your children, so remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate.
It's important for your children to stay current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are now eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. I'm current on all my vaccines and I also get the COVID vaccine so I and my loved ones can be protected. You and your kids should get the vaccine too. And if you've already gotten the vaccine, you should get your booster. For your child's routine vaccines, visit EPhealth.com. We know how much you love your children, so remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate.
It's important for your children to stay current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are now eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. I'm current on all my vaccines and I also get the COVID vaccine so I and my loved ones can be protected. You and your kids should get the vaccine too. And if you've already gotten the vaccine, you should get your booster. For your child's routine vaccines, visit EPhealth.com. We know how much you love your children, so remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate.
It's important for your children to stay current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are now eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. I'm current on all my vaccines and I also get the COVID vaccine so I and my loved ones can be protected. You and your kids should get the vaccine too. And if you've already gotten the vaccine, you should get your booster. For your child's routine vaccines, visit EPhealth.com. We know how much you love your children, so remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate.
It's important for your children to stay current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are now eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. I'm current on all my vaccines and I also get the COVID vaccine so I and my loved ones can be protected. You and your kids should get the vaccine too. And if you've already gotten the vaccine, you should get your booster. For your child's routine vaccines, visit EPhealth.com. We know how much you love your children, so remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate.
It's important for your children to stay current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are now eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. I'm current on all my vaccines and I also get the COVID vaccine so I and my loved ones can be protected. You and your kids should get the vaccine too. And if you've already gotten the vaccine, you should get your booster. For your child's routine vaccines, visit EPhealth.com. We know how much you love your children, so remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate.
It's important for your children to stay current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are now eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. I'm current on all my vaccines and I also get the COVID vaccine so I and my loved ones can be protected. You and your kids should get the vaccine too. And if you've already gotten the vaccine, you should get your booster. For your child's routine vaccines, visit EPhealth.com. We know how much you love your children, so remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate.
It's important for your children to stay current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are now eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. I'm current on all my vaccines and I also get the COVID vaccine so I and my loved ones can be protected. You and your kids should get the vaccine too. And if you've already gotten the vaccine, you should get your booster. For your child's routine vaccines, visit EPhealth.com. We know how much you love your children, so remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate.
It's important for your children to stay current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are now eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. I'm current on all my vaccines and I also get the COVID vaccine so I and my loved ones can be protected. You and your kids should get the vaccine too. And if you've already gotten the vaccine, you should get your booster. For your child's routine vaccines, visit EPhealth.com. We know how much you love your children, so remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate.
It's important for your children to stay current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are now eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. I'm current on all my vaccines and I also get the COVID vaccine so I and my loved ones can be protected. You and your kids should get the vaccine too. And if you've already gotten the vaccine, you should get your booster. For your child's routine vaccines, visit EPhealth.com. We know how much you love your children, so remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate.
It's important for your children to stay current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are now eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. I'm current on all my vaccines and I also get the COVID vaccine so I and my loved ones can be protected. You and your kids should get the vaccine too. And if you've already gotten the vaccine, you should get your booster. For your child's routine vaccines, visit EPhealth.com. We know how much you love your children, so remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate.
It's important for your children to stay current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are now eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. I'm current on all my vaccines and I also get the COVID vaccine so I and my loved ones can be protected. You and your kids should get the vaccine too. And if you've already gotten the vaccine, you should get your booster. For your child's routine vaccines, visit EPhealth.com. We know how much you love your children, so remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate.
It's important for your children to stay current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are now eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. I'm current on all my vaccines and I also get the COVID vaccine so I and my loved ones can be protected. You and your kids should get the vaccine too. And if you've already gotten the vaccine, you should get your booster. For your child's routine vaccines, visit EPhealth.com.
It's important for your children to stay current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are now eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. I am current on all my vaccines, and I also get the COVID vaccine so I and my loved ones can be protected. You and your kids should get the vaccine too. And if you've already gotten the vaccine, you should get your booster. For your child's routine vaccines, visit ephealth.com. We know how much you love your children, so remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate.
Es importante que sus hijos tengan todas sus vacunas. Además de las vacunas rutinas, los niños mayores de cinco años ahora son elegibles para la vacuna de COVID-19.
La vacuna COVID-19 es gratis. Para las vacunas rutinas de sus hijos, visite ephealth.com.
Sabemos cuánto amas a tus hijos. Así que recuerda, no lo dudes, vacúnate.
Visit the Mission Trail for many reasons. A wealth of history, culture, and arts. You'll be able to taste it. You'll be able to hear it. You'll be able to see it. You'll be able to dance to it.
To know us is to love us. You're going to meet people as if they're your friends. If you come here to the Mission Trail, you're going to get a really deep sense of the unity that we have because of this connection that we all have.
I think the Mission Trail has something for everyone. It has history. It has culture. You can learn. You can relax. And you can connect. It just kind of fills your soul.
You definitely want to see everything that we have to offer.
It's just something that you have to see and experience for yourself.
We have something very special going on here, and it's just starting.
The people here are very welcoming. We welcome you to the historic Mission Trail.
My go, I'm heading back. Welcome, everyone.
It's time to come down and check us out.
It's important for your children to stay current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are now eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. I am current on all my vaccines, and I also get the COVID vaccine so I and my loved ones can be protected. You and your kids should get the vaccine too. And if you've already gotten the vaccine, you should get your booster. For your child's routine vaccines, visit ephealth.com. We know how much you love your children, so remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate.
Es importante que sus hijos tengan todas sus vacunas. Además de las vacunas rutinas, los niños mayores de cinco años ahora son elegibles para la vacuna de COVID-19.
La vacuna COVID-19 es gratis. Para las vacunas rutinas de sus hijos, visite ephealth.com.
Sabemos cuánto amas a tus hijos. Así que recuerda, no lo dudes, vacúnate.
Visit the Mission Trail for many reasons. A wealth of history, culture, and arts. You'll be able to taste it. You'll be able to hear it. You'll be able to see it. You'll be able to dance to it.
To know us is to love us. You're going to meet people as if they're your friends. If you come here to the Mission Trail, you're going to get a really deep sense of the unity that we have because of this connection that we all have.
I think the Mission Trail has something for everyone. It has history. It has culture. You can learn. You can relax. And you can connect. It just kind of fills your soul.
You definitely want to see everything that we have to offer.
It's just something that you have to see and experience for yourself.
We have something very special going on here, and it's just starting.
The people here are very welcoming. We welcome you to the historic Mission Trail.
My go, I'm heading back. Welcome, everyone.
It's time to come down and check us out.
Commissioners Court has reconvened into regular open session. 2:49 PM. We're on item number 11C in regular session. Discuss and take appropriate action regarding legal rights and responsibilities in reference to Ascarate Park Regulatory Analytical Test Data Results.
Judge Commissioners Eric Rosales and Gaglione, Assistant County Attorney, were not asking for action on this item at this time.
Item 11C, no action. Item number 7A from Commissioners Court. Discuss and take appropriate action to appoint Christina Sanchez as the county attorney effective June 10, 2024, for the unexpired term of county attorney Joanne Bernal until a successor is elected at the next general election and has qualified.
Judge Commissioners, at your direction, the staff has prepared all the actions required for the court to appoint Christina Sanchez as the county attorney effective today, June 10, 2024, for the unexpired term of county attorney Joanne Bernal until a successor is elected at the next general election and has qualified. We'd ask for your motion and consideration to do so.
Done. We have a motion from Commissioner Coronado and a second from Commissioner Stout to approve. Voting is open.
Yes, sir. Can we say a few words before I push that button?
Absolutely. Okay, Christina.
It seems like very cold just to push a button. There you go.
We're done.
I am extremely honored and humbled to be able to vote yes and thinking that many years in the future, I'll be able to say, "I voted for that county attorney." So I'm very proud and really honored to be able to push that button. Thank you.
Yeah, Christine, I know we're going to hear a lot of great things, but you know, we've worked so close on everything, I mean, up to this morning, right? And I just, the friendship that you've had with Joanne and the mentoring that's taken place, and even at times, the student, you know, talks to the teacher kind of thing, and you know, it's just been such a great thing to see. And I think that behooves all of us that have some kind of opportunity to mentor someone, and the importance of that, that it's not like, like we have this gap, like, oh my goodness, what are we going to do here? Imagine that, at the level of where Joanne is at and what she's done, I still feel like you're right there. You're going to take that ball, and you're going to run with it. And we're very pleased at what you're capable of doing, but just your demeanor and your passion and your love for the county and for everybody else, it's going to be, it's going to be a great journey. And you know, it's hard to, you know, I don't want to let go of Joanne, but I want to, I don't want to let go of you either, so. I'm sort of slowly going to slide in that direction. But we're very fortunate, and like I said, I really hope that all of us look at this idea of succession planning. It's not easy, but I'm telling you, if you're looking, and our taxpayers and everybody, just to know that everything was done to make it happen the way it did, it wasn't easy, but I think we all need to be very conscientious of how important it is to have these kinds of transitions. And we're very pleased, obviously, with Joanne and your ability to be mentored. It's obvious that you're very coachable. And we thank you for that, but really, from the bottom, I know every time I hear someone speak about that, it's just very, we're very fortunate to have that kind of transition, not only for us, but I think for the community in general.
No, just going to, I just wanted to add my two cents and congratulate Christina. Since I've been here and before I came here, you've done great things for the county and, you know, there are big shoes to fill with Joanne's departure, but I know that you are up to the challenge and to the task and that you will lead us into the future in a fierce and fearless manner. And I'm just so happy that we're able to get you in even earlier. The voters spoke quite, you know, effusively and elected you and by a very, very, by a big margin. And so, you know, it's great to be able to have this opportunity, this historic occasion, this momentous occasion to see, to see you as our new county attorney. So thank you, and look forward to continuing to working with you.
Commissioner Coronado.
Thank you, Judge. Christina, I know that, you know, the county attorney is not going to miss a step, and neither is the county with you at their leadership. We are in very good hands as you leading, you know, the county attorney's office and the advice to Commissioners Court, including all your offices. There's a lot of dedicated attorneys that I know respect you, respect your work. And so, congratulations. We look forward to great things, obviously, because you're more than capable of that, and we welcome you now.
I'm going to have to, you always use this analogy, but behind every great woman... but behind every great woman is a great man, okay? You owe me one, okay? Thank you, Omar. Thank you for your support.
Commissioner Holguin.
I just wanted to say, you know, county attorney is such an important position, and we've been blessed here at the county that we had Senator Rodriguez as our trusted county attorney for so many years. And then Joanne, we had that continuity. But I know that it's going to be absolutely seamless as you transition into that role, Christina. And we're very, very fortunate to have you help lead our legal team here at the county. So, and in closing, the last thing I want to say is, Commissioner, you still haven't pushed the button. I don't. We need you to push the button. She's dying.
Motion carries.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you so much. I feel this has been a long time coming. We have talked about it, we've gone through an election. County Judge, Commissioner Holguin, Commissioner Leon, Commissioner Stout, Commissioner Coronado, I want to take this time, of course, to thank you so much for your vote of confidence. It does mean a lot to me to know that I do have the unanimous support of this body, that I am so fortunate, that all of us are really so fortunate to serve, fortunate enough to serve. As a message to this Commissioners Court and to every county elected official from our sheriff's office, our constable's office, the elected officials in our clerk's office as well. I know I'm missing a couple of folks or members of our judiciary. I just want you to know that it means so much to me to be able to provide good, quality, excellent legal services because our community deserves no less than that. I want to just acknowledge and take the time, of course, to acknowledge my predecessors, Jose Rodriguez, and of course, the wonderful and amazing Joanne Bernal, who has taken the time that she deserves to rest. I know we have no time to rest. There are a lot of issues that we need to tackle. I want you to know from the county attorney's office, and especially from me as we advise this court, that it matters to me and it is utmost importance to me to get the answers correct to you all, that we get the right information and right legal advice to you all. Because at the end of the day, it is our community who benefits from that. When I look across this room and I see my wonderful colleagues in the county attorney's office, they feel the same way, whether they're providing you that legal advice, any of our elected officials that advise our department heads, that advise our county administrator, Ms. Betsy Keller. So excited to continue working with her. But we know that in other areas, we also provide those services, whether it's in our mental health unit to ensure that there is dignity and compassion to those families and to individuals that have to seek those services, to our Child Protective Services Unit, our Adult Protective Services Unit. I can tell you, I've had the opportunity to meet and sit down with every one of the individuals who work in that office and in that unit, of course, in our CPS and our Adult Protective Services Unit. And I can't talk about enough their compassion and the work that they do, not, of course, during working hours, but off hours in order to ensure that that service is continued. Of course, from our Family Violence Unit as well, our Juvenile Unit to ensure that justice is done amongst our youth. And we continue to see that and to work at it better because we know, and we don't give up on anybody, but we have to ensure that there is accountability for those individuals who choose the wrong path. I'm so excited to begin this new journey. I thank you for your support. I know I will continue to have that support, and I know that I do have those big, full shoes to fill, but I know also that, please don't doubt that my intentions have always been and will always be with this community that I'm so fortunate enough to serve. And we will provide the best legal services that this community deserves. We are the largest office, if not, one of the largest law offices, if not the largest law office in the county. And so I feel that burden, I feel that responsibility, and I know we will do a good job. So thank you so much.
There is no doubt. I'm going to say it all started with Rosa Guerrero.
Oh, yeah.
I hope that, she probably is so proud of you because I learned about Rosa Guerrero and the dancing and the folklorico. But that's quite a, I mean, someone like her, the comments she made about you at one of the events really is very beautiful because she's just an amazing lady. And I got a new glimpse of who you were from her eyes. So you've got some great people waiting for you to do some amazing things.
Thank you, Judge. And if you could just indulge me for a moment. I didn't recognize, my husband is here, my children and my family are at home right now. But I am born and raised El Pasoan. I went to Burgess High School. My father didn't grow up, grew up just a couple of blocks from here in the Segundo Barrio. He went on to join the military. My mom, the same, both Jefferson High School graduates.
Of course.
Yes, of course.
I'm sorry.
Sorry I had to bring that up. But their values and what that means has really carried on in me. I was the first in my family to actually, and still am, the only person of a multi-generational family to have left El Paso to attend college, to attend, of course, law school, the only individual in my family to have received a law degree. So it's not lost on me in terms of that responsibility.
Yes, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Congratulations.
Where do we go from here?
That completes all the items on the agenda, Judge.
Okay, great. Well, thank you, everybody, thank you. One of the things I've always said, when you love somebody, you know, we respect Christina, but also we all have to sort of help her be successful and be there for her, you know, and I think that's very important, not only for her, but everybody else that we share, you know, whatever we can to allow, you know, someone like Christina to be as successful as possible. So we thank all of you for being here today as well, and thank you. And our translators back there, production team. Everybody have just a wonderful, wonderful week. Thank you.
This concludes today's meeting at 3:02 PM.